Like to call the meeting to order? All right. I am here. Stephanie's going to be late, so I'll do this. John? Sir? Alan?
Here.
Greg is here. Michelle? Jim? Stephanie is going to be late. Jennifer? Thank you. Lisa? So are you? Michael? Julie? Peter? Thank you. We have a quorum. So we'll move on to item two, public comment on the agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Seeing no one, we will move on to consent agenda. The item on the consent agenda for this evening is the approval of a number of minutes from several past meetings, so we're doing a little catch-up here. Are there any comments or questions on the items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, and the consent agenda items pass. Item D, reports and recognition. Board's report, the Chair's report this evening is rather short. We've all been quite busy on a number of different fronts, the Building Committee, the Search Committee, and well, Policy Committee. I mean, there's been just a lot of activities. So just a thank you there for everybody for keeping the machine working. With that, oh, actually, we had an award, an art award. Will you cover that?
Yes, I will.
Good. I'll leave that to you then. But another nice, another nice check for Region 12. So with that, Pat?
Good evening, everyone. I will start with the art winner. Rosalyn Penny placed second in the Congressional Art Competition for Connecticut's 5th District. And her winning work will be displayed in Washington DC in the office of Elizabeth Esty. So we're very, very proud of her and all of the artists. We've had many, many students have their work being displayed throughout Washington and the other towns. So congratulations to those students. I did want to give a shout-out to the spring sports, especially our baseball team, which was 8-0, and I believe after today, when I left, they had won. So it's not, they're 9-0, so that is a wonderful, wonderful start. And I saw Dominic Paracci pitch today, and he did a great job. So it was a wonderful day, and we've had wonderful. Girls tennis is 4-0-0, boys tennis 3-1-0. What? Who, the girls tennis? So five, that's great. Undefeated. Girls track 2-1, softball 3-4, boys track 2-1. And we have middle school sports starting tomorrow. So it's been a tough spring with the weather. You don't know the havoc that the weather has on our fields, and on our teams, and on our buses, and on our AD, and our coaches. So I just want to thank everyone for their patience and for doing a great job so far. The boys' baseball have already made the states, which is wonderful. Yeah, so that's great. We have a leave of absences. Kristin De Souza is going to be out till the rest of the year. She had a baby last fall. Jennifer Carrigan is, asked for her leave to be extended another year. So she had a baby a month or two ago, and will be taking off next year. And we have a retirement. Very sad to say that Mary Ann Zola, the TAG and STEM teacher, who you have met many times, is just outstanding educator in Region 12, will be retiring. And then just for your information, we have a trip to Sturbridge Village. And although it just says grade 5 from Booth and WPS, Burnham School is also going. And that is my, and that's just for your information. That's my report.
Are we not, I thought our policy was, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought we were required to approve field trips that went out of state.
I think it's 70 or 75 miles. I don't have the exact policy in front of me, but Debbie's pretty good about sharing with me which ones have to be approved and which ones don't. You certainly can approve it if, you know, you'd like to, but...
I'd like to move that we add to the agenda an item to approve the field trip to Sturbridge Village. Yeah, yeah. Well, but there's no decision on here, so I want to make sure that we've done it correctly. So all we need is a two-thirds vote to add it to the agenda.
Aye. All opposed? All motion passes unanimously. Greg?
I'd like to move that we approve the field trip to Sturbridge Village, Mass. on June 20, 2018, for grades 5 at Booth Free School, Burnham School, and Washington Primary.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Greg.
Yep, you're good. And that's my report.
Thank you. Jim?
I'd like to make a motion that the board accept the retirement of Mary Ann Zola with regret.
Any further discussion?
Can I just say something? I just want to say, because I was fortunate enough to, my kids were fortunate enough to have Mary Ann for a teacher, and I just think she is just an amazing teacher and a wonderful person. I'm really excited for her and the next stage in her life, but I think it's a big loss for our region. And it's so great that all three schools have had the opportunity to experience her, and how lucky that the entire region had had that chance. So I'm very sad to see her leave.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. But thank you, Jim, for bringing that up. Michelle?
I just was looking at our policy for field trips, and it says that they may be permitted. The distance is 75 miles. It says trips for greater distance, or those necessitating the crossing of state lines shall require the approval by the Superintendent of Schools and notification of the Board of Education. So we're okay. We didn't have to approve it. But we often do the more significant trips. You're welcome.
Okay. Moving to the next item on the agenda, which is item E, Region 12 Sexual Assault Prevention Program, K-12. Teresa, are you?
Good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Hope everyone's well, well-rested. I'd like to give you a little background on this evening's presentation. It was actually a board member that wanted to know about sexual harassment, and what we do, and what our protocols are. And at that time, I indicated that we do have a program, K-12, and that I would be sharing with the entire board. And this is in response to Connecticut legislation that we are required to offer this program for every student, K through 12th grade. And so what you have in front of you by grade is actually the name of the program, which is underlined, and then there are performance indicators, and learning targets, and activities. So it provides for you a summary of what students will experience as they go through each grade in the school system. So for example, when they're very young, pre-K and first grade, they are really taught about identifying, you know, what is safe about touch, that there are certain areas of the body nobody should be touching, and that if they get a gut feeling, what is called an "uh-oh" feeling, that they go immediately to an adult that they trust. So there are these puppets that the Women's Center uses, because for our program, K through 12, it's the Women's Center in Danbury that provides this instruction. And so the kids really do benefit. They respond very well. The administrators are very happy with the program. And when this legislation first came out, what I did is I had a meeting with all of the school counselors, all of the school psychologists, and Barbara Lankas, and our head nurse. And we looked at the legislation. We also looked at the research that I shared with them, because there are so many cases that are reported of children not being treated well, and really bordering on sexual harassment, and we want to definitely prevent that. So we agree with the legislation because of so many forthcoming complaints. And so it's a way to give kids an understanding of what's safe, what's not safe, and for them to respond to that gut feeling that something isn't right about this, no matter what age the child is. So on the first page, you see pre-K to first grade. Second grade is next, where they really start to also learn that they have to keep their hands to themselves as well. So it just elevates what they learn in the pre-K to first grade. In addition, third grade, as they're getting older, the program for third grade is called Bullying Beans, which is, it's kind of a catchy name, but it's really to identify bullying behavior, what is mistreatment. So it expands not just sexual harassment education, but how am I being treated as an individual? And then when you turn the page to the back, it continues with additional grades, 4 and 5. And here, they start to role-play. So students will actually take on a different role and experience self-advocacy. So how do I advocate for myself? And if I'm feeling uncomfortable, something is happening that I feel should not be happening. And so they're able to identify particular steps on how to get out of that kind of a situation. And again, as they're getting older, the content is appropriate for the students. So when they hit middle school, now we're talking about healthy relationships. We're talking about problem-solving skills. We're talking about healthy habits, and how to be respectful of your body and others. And in 7th grade, it expands to cyber-safety. Because as you know, predators can be anywhere, and with the age of the Internet, there are tremendous amounts of predators out there. And so it's very important for our youth to understand that they can't necessarily take it for granted, that just because they're sitting at home, that who they're communicating with online is someone that they should trust. Then in 8th grade, again, boundaries are elaborated on, sexual harassment terminology is used, and students participate in informational sessions. And then the last page for high school, the Women's Center does get into healthy relationships and dating violence, and provide students with knowledge of warning signs, and what some of those particular behaviors are that should provide red flags to a student so that they don't take it for granted. Because like I said, there are research aspects of the program, and so they're trying to definitely educate the youth so that they don't end up in a bad situation. Again, continuing on through 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, how to address sexual assault, how to prevent it, and how to advocate for yourself, and giving kids a voice, even if they're in a bad relationship, how to get out of it so they don't feel stuck. The last section is a copy of the letter that is sent home, that provides an overview to the families. Now, we do encourage all students to participate. And on the second page, I explain that the program is voluntary for students to attend. We have to offer it to students, but if a parent does not want their child to participate, they absolutely can communicate and say that they don't want their child to participate. They could also come and actually sit in the audience, so they can then have dialogue with their children afterwards as well. But all of that information is provided and mailed home to families. So usually, I come before you, and I talk about academics, but there's so much more to educating a whole child. And so this is one aspect where we do have this continuum, from when they're very young through the time that they are ready to graduate, that is important for all of you to see and understand. So wanted to take the opportunity to share the information with the whole board.
Just one question. This program is taught by the Women's Center, and is it at all, is there a portion of it that's specific to Chapag, where the policy is passed out, and where they know who they're supposed to go to if they're being harassed? Or is it just like a canned program?
No. I believe, because the counselors are a part of organizing it, and they are present. And so they're identified as go-to people. So they'll talk about it, could be family members, but you have counselors, you have educators, you have adults that you can go, so that is a part of it.
Got it.
Otherwise, it really would not be a type of presentation we would want. We definitely want students to feel like, I can identify somebody right now that is in my life or here at school. So yes, that is a part of it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Michelle?
The middle and high school, how are those, how is that handled? Like, when during the day do these sessions happen? Is the whole grade together, or is it in small?
So it's the whole grade. It's the whole grade. So on the letter, it like, it had like, for this school year, grade 6 was January 26, so that the parent would know in case they wanted to come or didn't want their child to participate. And it's typically in the morning.
So it's an assembly for that grade?
It's an assembly format with the students present, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Oh, the same question.
Teresa, I might have missed it, but did you, did this already happen this year?
Oh, yes. This letter really went out. So this one went out, and then there was a letter for this school year that went out in December of 2017.
Okay. And then, do you know what the dates were for pre, like, pre-K through 5?
In the fall.
Oh, that was fall.
Right. Because this was a Chapag sample letter you have here. So this sample is actually Chapag.
Got it.
So the younger students participate in this in September and October.
Oh, I see.
And the older students are later in the school year.
Okay.
You're welcome. And I think you see that in the chart, right?
I do, yeah.
Yeah, so in the fall is when we have for the younger children, and the letter goes out before that.
Jim?
You said, are you able to, on a scale of, say, 1 to 10, rate the significance of the, this issue at Region 12?
I can't speak to that. The only hope we have is that if a student has suffered a particular situation, that they do come forward because of this program, or that they learn something so important that it deters them from being in a compromised situation in the future. But I don't have those kinds of specifics.
I'm just trying to understand if you believe it's a significant issue at the school, at the region?
Unfortunately, in one of these programs, they talk about the myths of predators. And unfortunately, many times, it's someone that you know who gains your trust. And so they're trying to educate the young adults on how to look for those warning signs. I know when we were in a room together first talking about this, Officer Lankas said that she was constantly getting complaints every day. There wasn't a day that a youth did not come forward with a complaint. Not here, in her prior position. So we'd like to say that we're safe here, but the legislation is really intended to prevent further situations for youngsters.
I have no problem with the legislation or the job that you've done in complying with it. It's great. I'm just trying to get an understanding of the situation in this district, and you're the person who would know.
The counselors, I mean, I could go back and say, have you, has anyone come forward to actually share with you? Because we, we don't survey the students after and say, did this help you in any way? Did you get out of a situation in the future? We don't do that. They get exposure and a different curriculum every year, throughout all of their years in the school district. So it's revisited every single year with a different angle that's appropriate for their age. So I'm hopeful that it is taking some preventive measures.
I'm sure it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa.
You're welcome. So I have a second agenda item, ACT.
Look at that.
So just wanted to give you a quick update, because the table has turned on us rather quickly with the weather that happened on March 21st, where we got out of school early, and we're not able to administer the SAT. So that bumped the SAT to tomorrow, April 24th, which was the original scheduled date for ACT. So we don't schedule those dates, the organizations do. And what that did is it bumped up the ACT to April 3rd. So we scrambled very quickly. We did administer. We had almost 100% participation. We're waiting on those results, so I just wanted to let you know that we were, we were a bit scrambled there, but we got through it, and we'll see what the results are. Just wanted to give you that little update.
Okay, thank you.
And how long will it take, Teresa, to get the results back?
I mean, it could take as little as three weeks. They give a window for themselves, because April 3rd was an administration of ACT nationally. So we'll see how quickly the turnaround time is.
Thank you. Alan?
Did I hear you correctly? You said 100% participation?
Almost.
Almost, that's great.
Almost. Yep, it was offered to everybody. Yes.
Since we're on the topic of standardized testing, tomorrow is the...
SAT.
SAT, correct?
Yes, it is.
So you're very busy with standardized testing.
Yes.
I'm wondering if we, as a district, could also think about for the future, that this, I don't expect an answer right now, but preparing freshmen and sophomores for taking the PSAT? Obviously, the PSAT would normally count the junior year, but I'm just wondering if that's something that we could do. I know many districts do offer the PSAT so that students are familiar with it. I mean, certainly, parents can do that on their own, too.
So we administer the PSAT to all 10th graders and to all 11th graders in the fall. And then the 11th graders take the SAT in the spring. But we do already provide that for every sophomore. So, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is an AgSTEM update. Greg, Greg needed to go to zoning? Zoning tonight, right? And is this the last, this is it, right? The last of the local moguin? So, so far, so good. Yeah, that's great. So he needed to excuse himself. He may or may not be coming back to join us later, but he certainly is needed there. A couple of things, and Bob is not here. So you have financials in the package. Bob's standard, you know, I'm looking at it, I, to me, nothing's jumping out at me that's out of the ordinary. Pat, do you, nothing as far as you know? Right. So if there are any questions there, I suggest you reduce them to writing, send them to Bob. Copy Greg, please, if there's anything particular about the financials. Or send them to me. I'll try to work with them. I will say that Pat just gave me two letters that we received, according to date, today, from DAS, for each of the projects clearing us to start going out to bid on Phase 1 of both projects. So Phase 1 in particular is...
I have a question.
Just, okay, thank you. So we are, each, each conversation, this is getting more tangible by the moment, and as soon as a shovel goes in the ground, it's going to get really real. So it's exciting. It's really exciting. Alan?
Yeah, this letter from DAS, this is what we were waiting for, as far as approving our space changes, or has that already been done? Remember, we were waiting for the square footage? So if they're giving us this, then they're happy with that. It's no longer a question, right?
Yeah, please.
Right before spring break on the Wednesday, a group of us went to DAS up at the state, and we went through the projects with the architects, Kermit up there, and we got very, very good feedback. That's when he told us that we would be able to go out to bid, and that he would send us the letters for Phase 1. We were very happy to hear that. The space standards, we seem to be okay. We're trying to get something in writing, so until we get it in writing, we can't say that we're 100% okay. I will tell you that we were happy to hear that the FFNE, which is the Furniture and Fixer budget, will be added to our project. We weren't sure if it was going to come out of the 29 million, or if it was an addition, and we were told by Michelle Dixon it would be addition, and it was about $1.5 million. So we're very happy to hear that. And we got a really great report. They were very happy with our team, they were very happy with getting information to them when they asked for it, our response to their requests, and it was a very productive meeting. And so now, basically, the information that I just gave to the chairman just says that we can now go out to bid for people to come and do the demolition, which will start right when school ends, with the asbestos, the science area, all, that whole area. So, yeah, it's great news. It really is great news. I mean, it's moving now, full speed ahead.
Thank you, Pat. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, moving to the next item on the agenda, policies. We have a second reading of enrollment of children, non-resident and certified and non-certified staff. Michelle?
So the policy that's first on the agenda is 5118.2, which is enrollment of children of non-resident, certified, and non-certified staff. The, the language in yellow is the new language, and it has not changed from the first reading. Does anyone have questions?
I move, I move to approve 5118.2, second reading.
Any further questions? I have a question. He says, the areas that were highlighted, in what I'm looking at, there's only a cross-out. Is that, am I not looking at the right copy? Or is this, is this the iPad problem?
Yeah, sorry.
I have it on my phone, I don't get it highlighted.
It's highlighted on the Chromebooks. I don't under, I don't...
Yeah.
Yeah, she used to have that problem with her iPad, Greg, too.
Thank you. Let's keep it out there. Okay, so I got my question answered.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained?
I had a yes, but I'm sorry.
Okay. The motion passes unanimously for the second reading of policy 5118.2, enrollment of children of non-resident...
2, 2 was the first one. We're doing 3.
Oh, I misspoke. I meant enrollment of children of non-resident, certified teachers and non-certified staff. I meant enrollment of children of non-resident certified teachers and non-certified staff. Now, we can get to the next one. Dot three. Michelle?
All right. This should reflect the comments that were made by the board from the first reading. So all of the yellow language was left. Yellow, that's all of the new language that was put together by the Tuitioning Committee and written by Gary, our attorney. And the green were the things that came out of the first reading. So you'll see the change in language regarding the tuition payments being in two payments. And just a clarification that this policy is not for the AgSTEM program. That will work under its own, either policy or just state regs.
I'll make a motion that we approve 511.8. I'm sorry, 5118.3 as second reading.
Second. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? All those abstained? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So second reading of policy 518.3, non-resident attendance has passed. Thank you. Michelle? Before we adjourn, just a reminder that the search committee is meeting immediately after this building in one, whatever room we can, we can open. So with that, we have a motion to adjourn. And yes, we'll take a five minute break in between.
Move to adjourn.
Sorry. We have a question.
Just, just one thing I wanted to bring up. And I did send a number of, you know, my wife sent a number of emails about the bus situation with the closure of Route 67 in Bridgewater. It's, you know, naturally going to cause a disruption. I think what, what was kind of puzzling to us is that, you know, when we tried to get the word out about it, it seemed that we were kind of the only voice yelling in the wilderness about the issue. And then, so the long and short of it was this morning was, was kind of a real challenge for at least my family and I imagine perhaps other, other families in Bridgewater. And I'm just wondering if there's something that we can learn from this so that this wouldn't happen again. I realize that in many cases, we're not going to have the kind of disruption for a week or more, which is what's happening here in Bridgewater. But I also imagine that there are other instances, maybe in the past or in the future, where major roads are going to be impacted. And so I'm just wondering what, what we, as a board, can, can put in place? Maybe it's something that needs to go to the policy committee to look at our policy for transportation, what would happen as far as communication, what we have as far as protocol? Or if this was just so bizarre and so unusual that it threw the district for a loop?
Do you have any thoughts?
Mike? What are you asking, what are you asking to be done?
I think I'm asking, and I don't think I'm being unreasonable, to expect that the district communicate to families that are affected, to, to think about situations beforehand instead of having to react at the last minute. As I mentioned, today was really an imposition. My wife had to be late to work. We weren't, you know, we kind of were getting mixed messages as far as the district was concerned about where the drop off was for our daughter. There was no communication except in reaction to our reaching out. And I do know that there were, at least my immediate neighbors were affected by it as well. Obviously, going to the Burnham School is a little bit less challenging from our neck of the woods than coming here. But I can also imagine that this is not something that will never happen in the past and will never happen in the future. I'd like to have some reassurance that we do have some kind of a protocol for communication and for disruption to schedule, to the busing schedule, so that if something like this does happen again, we can minimize the disruption instead of making it even worse.
Okay. Thank you.
I can only tell you what I know. I know that we didn't get any formal notification that there was going to be a problem with the roads. So that came up on Friday, that it was brought to our attention, and it was the week that we were on spring break. So not everyone was here. There was a plan this morning, but unfortunately, the bus couldn't get through the road that they wanted to. So that's why the plan didn't work. So I don't want anyone to think we didn't have a plan. We had a plan. It just didn't work because the bus couldn't get through the road. You know, I think we're pretty good at being, our bus company is fabulous. I just can't say any other words about them, that, you know, they work very hard to try to make things and work with the families. We have a plan tomorrow. I have the email here from Pam Newton to your wife explaining that, you know, if it doesn't work, if the bus doesn't come during that specific time, to call so that we'll make sure the bus doesn't leave. I don't know as far as putting in a policy or anything, how things could really be much different. But I know that it was a problem. And I think that honestly, your family was the only one where there was a problem today. So I just want to let you know that there wasn't other parents who had a problem today. But it is an issue that they're reworking the lines over there by the mobile station. If there's a gas leak or whatever there was, it's, it has been an issue. But I will make sure tomorrow that I contact Pam again. And I know Bob was involved today to make sure, you know, we'll do our best to make sure she's picked up tomorrow.
Sure.
I just have a question, because I don't know. Is it, whoever closed the road, whether it's the state or the town or?
State.
State. Do they traditionally send a notice to?
Probably the town.
Probably the, okay, so the town. So just, I wonder if maybe improving communication between the road crews, although they have great communication on snow days with the transportation and Pam, like, they would know. Although, they may have been on spring break as well because they weren't serving our district. So, yeah, I don't know.
The issue with this was that they had sent numerous notices to the town, and they kept, it was beginning a little crazy with town halls because they kept delaying when they were going to close the road. Originally, it was going to be the weekend prior, our first weekend of spring break for four days. And then it was going to be the beginning of that week for five days. And then, by the time it actually was closed, we only got about 24-hour notice. And then it was going to be like 10 to 15 days. So unfortunately, you know, notice came as soon as it could, but we were a little confused as to, you know, why they kept changing it. But I guess that's how it is as far as their timing and their budgeting and their allocating money in this somewhat of an emergency in the weather. So that was kind of the issue, is that there was no, there wasn't a lot of good lead time.
Yeah, well, because I think that it's important to know that, you know, late notification from either the town or the state makes it difficult, you know, to be noticed on Friday about something happening on Monday and on a Friday that you're not open is definitely a challenge. So I guess just improving between all three towns, you know, even possibly, it might have been helpful to know that it was on the horizon so that the plan could be in place so that when they did get the 24-hour notice, they were ready to go. I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, it is frustrating because there are multiple layers of people that I guess we could all point fingers to. I mean, the state's involved, the town is involved, the district is involved, the bus companies. We can, we can all do that. I guess it's just frustrating as a family when, when they have the forethought to put up signs about the detour, you know, well ahead of time in towns like New Milford and Southbury. But they didn't have the forethought to think of contacting the district when there, this is a state highway. This is a public transportation artery. I mean, I just, I'm kind of flabbergasted that the state wouldn't have contacted Region 12, too. So maybe that could be feedback that Region 12 could give to the state, too. I, I don't know. Just kind of shocking to me that they wouldn't think. I mean, obviously, it sounds like they thought of contacting the town of Bridgewater, but...
The one thing, well, how many regions are there? There are 18? I mean, they may feel that their job is done when they contact the town because the town needs to then communicate to the regional district. I don't, I don't know because most town, most school districts in the state are operated by the town, with the exceptions of the regions. So, and I, I think it's the towns who usually communicate road issues, whether it's bridge or trees, whatever it is. The communication between the highway departments of our towns and the bus companies is very good. They work really well together. So just somehow, this one, maybe probably because of the delays, just didn't get through.
It also could have been more of a detail from what Michael has said, is that, and I checked in with Bob, just happened to check in with Bob on Sunday just to make sure everything was okay. And he assured me that it was. And I think what Michael said is that they had planned to pick up, see, the Sinatra's live are the only ones in the, in the detour, in the zone, in the zone of closure.
Right.
And I think Bob had figured this out with Pam, that, how to access that area. And Michael had even said, correct me if I'm wrong, that, you know, he can drive in and out, obviously, to get home. And the mail's going to get in, and then hopefully, the garbage will get in. So there is, there was access despite the fact they're right there at the road closure area. And I think it may have come down to the fact that there was communication between, there probably wasn't adequate communication between maybe even Pam and Michelle, the bus driver, to say, no, you're allowed to signal the police and say, I'm coming in. And she probably saw that and said, eh, and that was it. And that was it. Because everybody else can be accessed by going through the detour. Except for the Sinatra's. So, you know, it's just a lot of moving pieces.
A lot of little things. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
On an upside, if anyone's teaching their child how to ride a bike, 67 in Bridgewater is really good right now for that. No traffic.
All right. So we, we had a motion on the floor to adjourn the meeting, but I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? All right. Thank you. All those opposed? Motions were adjourned. Thank you.